I call to order the Wilson County Commission meeting to March 16th, 2020. This time, we will call the Commission meeting to order in Commission Diane Weathers if you will introduce our prayer and pledge for tonight, or I can do that from here. And that would be the prayer by our WEMA director, Mr. Joey Cooper, and our pledge by Sheriff Robert Bryan. I would ask you to remember Ms. Robinson, as she went to visit with her son today, Mr. Shane Dixon, and his wife Amanda will be deployed for three years in Romania. And so today was her chance to see him as he left for a pretty good while. So she asked that I would let you know that and that you would remember him and their family in their prayers. Please rise.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we bow before you tonight because we know that you're in charge. We ask that you will oversee us as we go through this time in this county, other counties around us. We pray for your blessing, your hand upon us, that we will continue the best way that we know how as a government and as individuals. Father, we pray that you will be with the family of the lives that were lost a few weeks ago, and with all the injured, and be with all the responders, for there's so many to be named. First responders, the puppet works, the commission here, the mayor's office. I'm going to get in trouble here because I'm going to leave somebody out, but the utility workers, there's just so, so many people that come together to show their love for one another because you love us. Father, we pray that you will be with us also as we conduct the business of the county tonight, and may we do so in a manner that's pleasing with you. And Father, we ask this to your Son Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, men. Thank you for what you do for our county. Please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Twenty-three present and two absent. A story a moment now by Commissioner Jerry McFarland.
Close to it here. Ladies and gentlemen, if I were going to title my little talk tonight, I would talk about artifacts. And you know, if there's a plane crash or a military conflict or something, there's always artifacts or things left in and around. Some slides are put together, we'll start showing in just a minute, but I have not rehearsed, nor has Teresa and I rehearsed the slides, so please be forgiving of me tonight as I go through these. First of all, Tech Sergeant Stiles from Texas, is in the 26th Division. If you want, just go ahead and bring a slide up, Teresa. It died? Oh, great. There you go. Tech Sergeant Stiles from Texas, within 26th Division. The division started out on the morning of March the 22nd, 1944, in Mount Juliet. And they started a road march to Lebanon, this is early in the morning, to Lebanon, through Lebanon, down the Hartsfield Pike, all the way to Avet's Ferry. And you've heard me talk about what took place at Avet's Ferry. The 23 guys got in some boats, we had pictures of those, but apparently we have a technical difficulty. Started across the river, boats capsized, nobody really knows, it was the middle of the night, somewhere midnight, thereabouts. There's nothing there. Most beautiful river, most beautiful scenic place in the world. Sergeant Stiles was the first of the 21, 20 that were recovered. One never was recovered, still there, but of the 20 that were recovered, Sergeant Stiles was the first. He had his rifle slung with a sling here and the rifle on his back because they had to paddle that boat. And when he was recovered, he still had that rifle on his body. Body and rifle was taken to Dr. Gwynn in Hartsfield, Tennessee. Now understand, there's nothing out there to see now, just where it took place, anything like that. The rifle, along with Sergeant Stiles' body, was taken to Dr. Gwynn in Hartsfield, Tennessee, who pronounced him dead, and they sent him on to Phillips and Robinson Funeral Home in Nashville because that's who the government's contracted with. But rifle itself, the rifle itself remained in the Dr. Gwynn family. M1 rifle. Sergeant Stiles' head strapped across his body. It went to the bottom of the river with it. That's now part of our collection at our museum. It will be so placked, and it's the only artifact that I know of that's still in existence from that tragic accident that took place. And that's your history moment for March. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner McFarland. Commissioner McFarland also had set up for Captain Barry Wilmore to be and visit our Veterans Museum this last week. Had a good turnout and a good crowd there, so again, we commend you for that as well. That was a great history lesson for our young ones that got a chance to come and visit with him. At this time, a report from the Steering Committee, Commissioner Patton.
The Steering Committee met at the County Commission conference room on Thursday, March the 5th, 2020. The minutes are in your packet.
Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Adoption of the agenda?
The agenda will need to be amended so that includes the election of two judicial commissioners. Obviously, we have to pass it, and Mr. Gary Cooper is the chair, and so now we'll have to do that tonight, so I need to make a motion to amend the agenda.
amend the agenda to have the two judicial commissioners voted on tonight. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And consent agenda?
Yes, I consent.
Done tonight. Special recognition at this time, do we have any? I will say this, the technical difficulties that we have is that this machine is locked into this computer. Our goal is to put another screen over here where it's strictly run by what's in the back, so that anytime you want to have a program, we can have one, and we don't have to worry about losing our system. So that is in the works, and hopefully we won't have that problem when we get that fixed. Reports from the Minutes Committee, Commissioner Bishop?
The Minutes Committee met March the 5th in the conference room here at the courthouse to review the minutes of the last meeting. The minutes were approved with one correction. The corrected minutes were in your packet. Make a motion to report the acceptance of the vote.
Got a motion and a second. Now any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Reading of the minutes?
We've been spent three minutes.
Okay, and a second?
Do whatever.
Yeah, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tonight, I have a few things to bring to you. There's a lot of things going on, as you well know, with everything that has happened in our county and in our country. I have tried to prepare a packet for you, just because I know that you get a lot of questions. That packet is in front of you now, and I'll be real brief in going through it, but the first one you will see tells you that the Gentry Building is a building where our constituents can go and file a FEMA claim. The second one you will see there is that it's a small business administration loan application, but also in the right side here in blue will tell you where the people in the east part, in the west part of the county can go to the FEMA organization as well, which is at Hermitage Community Center. Now, I will say that there has been some conversation of trying to get another location in Mount Juliet, and they are working for that, I think, as we speak. I think it's important for you to be sure that we know that as you run into the people in your district that want to file a FEMA claim, let me just walk you through the process as brief as I can, but if they have a tornado damage, fill out your homeowner's insurance first, go to FEMA and sign up with them. They're going to say, fill out this small business loan. You need to do that. You don't have to accept it, but if you don't fill it out, it stops the process. Fill it out. If you get it, you can decline it, and then say, okay, now what can you do for me? FEMA will look at the house after insurance has come in, and they'll see if three things were taken care of. Is it safe? Is it sanitary? And is it functional? If it's not those three altogether, that's when FEMA kicks in. You may get a notice that says, hey, your application is denied. Tell them to follow up and say, why is mine denied? Sometimes the address is wrong, sometimes the number's left out, it could be many things. Let them tell you why it's been denied, and then you can appeal to that. But if they don't follow that process, and that's what, as I've talked to some of our citizens, they say, hey, I don't want a loan, I want to be made whole. And so they stop right there, and FEMA stops right there. So please be sure that if you get conversations with your folks, tell them to go through the process and stay with it for as long as they can. You'll see also in there is a daily fact sheet from FEMA. I included the one that came from today, so I will send you those updates as I get those. You'll see a page in there that gives you resources from Mount Juliet. You'll see the next page, resources from Lebanon. And then you will see one that says Recovery Wilson. Recovery Wilson is, there's really four people that are working here, and they're actually working with you. They've taken the names from what Joy's group have done at WEMA. There's 170 homes that were totally destroyed. So there's been two out of Mount Juliet and two out of Lebanon, and they've actually divided the county, as bad as I hate to say it, by 109. And what they've done is that they're going to go and meet everybody that has 100% destruction, and that's what they started doing last week, and just talking through this process with them. So they'll do that. The next thing they'll do is attack the people that's got 50% of destruction, and then they'll do the 25%. So they are working for that. You'll have people that say, how can I donate? There's a sheet in there that will tell you where you can donate. And we'll also give you a sheet that I know Congressman Executive Ray Render with us has given. I gave you that copy as well, which simply says that of the community foundation, you know, they have been collecting money. Now, this letter right here will show you where you can go in there and request some of those funds to get to your people if you have them in your district. You will see this also provided by Ray Render that worked with the Chambers. If anybody has IRS issues, lost all their tax paperwork, they're going to be at Mount Juliet Chamber one day and the Lebanon Chamber the next day, so guide your people to that. I give you that as well. I will let you know that the property assessor has gone out and is evaluating all of our properties. They will make those properties prorated from March the 3rd to December if they've had destruction and they've lost. So now that will be property value that we will lose, okay? I will stop at that point and tell you that I learned today that there was some legislation filed by our legislatures back during the Gatlinburg fire, where the state came in and made them whole on the property taxes that were lost and some sales tax. So I reached out to our representatives today, and I sent them both of these bills, and hopefully they will see about doing that for us as well. Don't know where that will go, but I do know that that does exist as we learned today, so hopefully that will be something good for us. County Building Inspector, as we know, also has said, if you are rebuilding, you must get a permit, but you won't have to pay a fee, and that is also located here. It's not a new home, so therefore there will not be an adequate facility charge. Tracy Pope with Vanderbilt-Wilson Hospital puts something out every day, and also this is a website where you can go and find the latest of the CDC recommendations, and that changes daily. And so know that there's a place that you can go for that, as well as a couple of more sheets about the virus that we are continuing to be apprised of and to fight. I will say that this is some mental health services that have been offered free if you know of people that may need that during this time. And then you'll see several sheets there on the back. This simply has different information that we have highlighted that are still current, different things on there, like if you know someone that lost their hearing aids, there's a lady on here that's providing free hearing aids for those folks, so a lot of freebies here for the people that have been affected. The libraries will be closed until March, when is it, Diane?
I haven't determined.
Haven't determined, but they are going to be closed.
Tomorrow.
And then, just so you know, that from our standpoint, we've tried to prepare here for if things continue to be going down this process of being worse, that we can actually shut off our courthouse to the public and our register of deeds, our county clerk is working on that, and our trustee, that will be able to do all of their services online. So our personnel will come in and handle the phone and handle the files that have come in online, but we can continue working that process if we have to close to the public. I will tell you that everything that we can do, we've tried to do here from sanitation issues, we're cleaning well, you know, we've offered gloves to our people that actually handle money every day, and we've tried to stay on top of our issues. Tomorrow, we'll meet with the Department, the Board of Health, along with WEMA and our Health Department Director as a group, and just talk about what we've done so far and what's out there to be done. Last thing I will tell you is that I've been asked a question about when does the sales tax take in effect? I did reach out to Ms. Amy with the State of Tennessee, and she said, when the vote is certified, which it just got certified on Friday, that I would send that to her. It would take approximately 60 days to get everything done. They will process that, they will be the ones that will tell everybody in the county to up their machines to where it will be calculated right. So we should somewhere, it's probably middle of May, but to be safe, the 1st of June, start collections, and then, of course, you'll be able to count those in your next year's budget as you work towards those. There are some things that I have reached out also and talked to some of our other surrounding counties about things that are being done for our employees, and so I will suggest some of those things to you in the near future through committee, about maybe some days in case we have some of our people that get affected in some way. But I've just kind of scoped what the other counties are doing, and I will bring that to you through the proper committees. And I have one more thing, but I'll bring that up later on tonight. Any questions for me? Yes, sir.
Is all this information concerning FEMA on our website?
Yes, sir.
Because it's difficult to distribute it throughout.
Yes, sir.
It is on the website?
Yes, sir. Everything that we've got is on our website. I wanted to give you that packet so that you'd have it if somebody called you.
I understand, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions or any comments or things that you think that we should be doing in our office? Not, we'll move forward then. Elections and appointments, Mr. Goodall, any notaries to be added to our list? Good to hear, motion to approve the notaries? Second? Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Mr. Marlowe, could I get you to come forward, and we'll do the resolution to set the salary for the county attorney first, and then we will look to appoint the next county attorney. I have mine up here, Commissioner Marlowe, if you want to just take mine, you can take it. Sorry, I didn't brief you on that.
Okay, this is Resolution 20-3-4, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, establishing the rate of compensation for the Wilson County Attorney.
Motion to approve. Second? Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-two yes, one abstain. Resolution passes. Now we'll go to the county attorney. The floor is now open for nominations.
Motion for Mike Jennings, and I have a second. I have other nominations.
Nomination seat?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will vote on Mr. Jennings. And I believe that was it, so congratulations.
I think you would have given it your last. Don't we need to vote?
We did, really, that's what I was thinking. But we'll do it again, just to be on the safe side. Vote for county attorney, Mike Jennings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Got one abstain, I've got two abstain. Two abstain, and the rest of the majority carries. Mike Jennings, thank you for serving as our attorney, and we'll move forward. Judicial Commissioners now, there are two members. Commissioner Glover, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yes, we're making a motion to sit there and elect Pat Tuggle and Roger Marsh. Just went through the committee tonight, it was supposed to be on March 5th, but a lot of people on this committee know things going on that night.
I got a motion, you said Pat Tuggle?
Pat Tuggle and Roger Marsh.
Second, now any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The record reflected was unanimous. Report from the Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Emergency Manager Director, report, Director Cooper.
Good evening, Commissioners and guests. I have provided details in your handout on the tornado stats. In addition to that, and I'll just give a summary. At this time, the state of emergency has been extended for another seven days. Wilson County Emergency Operations Centers in Level 3 partial operations, and that is to continue the recovery phase from that. This time, the damage assessments within the county are as follows. 1,307 total structures with reported damage, 181 destroyed at 100%, 203 with major damage, 280 with minor damage, and 643 with affected damage. Broken down Mount Juliet has 395 total. Lebanon was 778, and the county was 134. To go over the medical report again, there were three fatalities in Mount Juliet. 91 people were treated on scene or in the local emergency rooms. Twelve of those were admitted to the hospital. Of course, the disaster recovery centers that the mayor mentioned, Hermitage Community Center is established, and Registration Intake Center was established at James T. Ward Agriculture Center. And as he mentioned, we are currently working for another DRC in Mount Juliet. Each location will be open from 9 to 6 each day, and anybody can go to any of those centers, you know, it don't have to be in your area. You can go to Nashville if you're in that area, or you go to the one closest to you. Also, along with that, disaster assistance teams are out in the community going door to door, registering people that way. Currently, there's no active shelters in the county that's open. All residents that were displaced have been set up with temporary housing, and currently we are working with the Tennessee Housing Task Force on working for permanent housing type issues. That is currently being done. At this time, our main objectives going forward, maintain continuity of government, provide disaster assistance and resources to all affected, maintain health and safety of the public and responders, help coordinate debris removal, along with Steve Murphy. Right now, we have private National Guard, T.D.O., T.V.A., and Public Works all working debris removal. Help coordinate FEMA on the disaster recovery centers, and support local governments and facilitate local resource needs. Currently, of course, we've been pinballing back and forth between the tornado and with COVID-19. We are communicating on a daily basis with Department of Health and the local health department on that. Currently, we have set procedures and guidelines in place for all first responders. And that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Question, Mr. Cooper. Your motion to approve the report?
Is there a question?
Second?
I'll pull out the community that were hospitalized, you have used the four of those that were in the charge, the whole community that's all.
No, sir, I do not at this time. Getting the 91 took quite a while. I mean Davidson, because a lot of those either went local or they went to a Nashville hospital, so they were having to separate which ones came from us and which ones were brought in from Nashville. So I do not have that, no.
Any other questions? Yes, sir. Commissioner Smith?
Director Cooper, I want to thank you, seeing for putting in hours.
Well. Well, I do want to thank you for that, but I can tell you, I mean, it was, I'm telling you, it was a group effort between every department that works. So, you know, I want to definitely recognize them because I think everybody come together and worked tremendously through this whole operation. And it don't matter, you know, as we said before, it don't matter the patch on your sleeve. Everybody worked together, and that's what it takes to get the job done. So, you know, I definitely want to recognize them, so couldn't have been done without them.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from the Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich.
I'll report.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, your reports in your packet. First of all, I'll say thoughts and prayers go out to everybody that's infected, especially the ones that's family of those that's lost loved ones in this tragic event we had over a week ago. Joey went over the numbers, and I want to commend Joey Cooper for his hard work also, him and his team, along with the mayor's office, several in this room, and I start naming people, I'm going to leave somebody out. We couldn't do this, no one agency, as Joey said, could do this, and it was a team effort. But I saw a county come together as one after the tornado struck. There were no jurisdictions or lines, there was no Highway 109 dividing. It was everyone working together for the purpose, one thing, the citizens of this county. I witnessed all law enforcement agencies in this city and county, both state and local, come together for one purpose as well. I saw fire departments and emergency management agencies and everybody working together. As Joey said, not about to put patches on your shirt. Didn't make no difference that night. That night, when we saw the tornado was coming, we got... That night, when we saw the tornado was coming, I got my wife and dog over in the bathtub, jumped in my car, and I told this to the mayor several times over the past few weeks. Just amazed you, listening to that radio, of all your county employees checking. Ten eight, mayor, what's that mean?
Me and.
They're en route. It would really amaze you, people that didn't ask, we didn't ask them, they would come running. And there's a couple in this room, I want to thank personally. I'm looking at one of them, and one of them, and one of them. Everybody. But it was a team effort. As Joey said, we're sort of pinballing back and forth on from one disaster to another about this virus. Let me tell you something, this county's strong. And I saw it. As long as we stick together, this county's gonna be all right. Yeah, there's gonna be some bumps in the road. We're gonna be all right. As long as we stick together, remember where we're from, and remember how we got over these tornadoes. I just want to leave it at that, and thank you.
Your motion?
Approved.
Any discussion, any questions? CNN, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from education committee, Commissioner Stafford.
No report.
And director of schools, report, Dr. Donna Wright.
Good evening. I'll repeat maybe some of the same that occurred tonight from Director Cooper and Sheriff Bryan. First, something that sort of got overlooked when we met on the evening of March the 2nd, not knowing what we were going to be facing that evening. And the next day, get a little bit of, I guess, joy if anything. But I want to thank this body for championing from the very beginning the sales tax reform. That was unanimous vote by this body. And that's been forgotten by many. And I want to put it back out there because without you supporting it, putting it out there, addressing it, particularly making very specific the need, the magnitude of what will be had by that, it not be counted. And it's one that others around the area have watched and wanted to know how it happened. And the credit was given to this body because that's where it started. So I wanted to make sure that that was not forgotten because so much has happened since March the 3rd. And when I listen to, you know, Joey and I listen to Robert talking about what's happened, I almost wonder if things have not been a biblical proportion. Because when looking at the magnitude, particularly with the school district, you know, what happened in Metro was horrendous. In Putnam County, I don't even want to think about because the loss of five children and 14 adults. But we lost two schools. And the thing that I said the other day when we had the press conference, if it had been 12 hours earlier, the conversation would have been so different. Seventeen hundred plus. Children and adults would have been on that campus, we'd have been less than four miles of each other. So that all brings things back into perspective quickly, and how fortunate, how grateful it should be. Stories that come out of there when you was listening, immediate. I don't know that I've ever seen anything as far as not only law enforcement looking at emergency services, and you know, like you at 2:30 in the morning, I'm listening to the radio too, and it was unbelievable. But when it came out to just not only our faith-based community, there was no 109. The churches in Mount Juliet were dealing with what was occurring there in the immediate vicinity, but they were also reaching out because they knew there had been damage across the county. And churches in Mount Juliet were sending relief and food to Commerce Street and Tucker Crossroad, reaching out to Watertown. But likewise, the Lebanon churches, I mean, you were also making sure that they were supporting what was happening in Mount Juliet. I've never seen anything like it at any time, anywhere. And for that, grateful as a community of how we take care of each other. At the conference the other day, I gave an update that we were looking at possibly 12 homes lost belonging to teachers. Since then, as we've checked in, as things have got, it might be higher than that because some of the teachers, what reported that they thought they had heavy damage. The insurance companies do not use the word total, but that was what was being expressed, that their homes were lost. Everything from roofs being lifted and shifted to foundations being destroyed and the house not being salvageable. Six injuries that we know of, some of them very dramatic as well as traumatic. And the thing that we will not know for a while as far as the trauma that our children faced, and as well as the adults, but something for children specifically, that they, parents have been reaching out to us. But the thing that I'm really, really proud of, and much of it initiative that we took on two and a half years ago, about really knowing our children. And it seems very simple, but the idea being that know your kids, and this is for teachers and principals, not just a name on a roster, but know who they are. Where do they come from? Identify their strengths, identify their successes, find out what they get excited about. Because for some kids, school is a chore and one that they dread. Before you ever determine what their needs are, and what we do need to do is fill in their gaps. And that personalization has really made a difference in two and a half years. And we see it in the success of our schools right now. That's why we're in the top 20 out of 145 school districts because of what our teachers and our administrators are doing for kids. Well, I started getting stories this week coming back from parents wanting to show, share with things with me with what our teachers are doing while we're out. Teachers reaching out particularly to the young ones and saying, checking in with them specifically by letter, by email, just checking in to make sure you're okay. I know that this has been a hard time, and I mean, I could go on and on, even to high school teachers, which are not quite as warm and fuzzy as your elementary teachers. And I'm sure that some of them felt, you know, like they had to, but they did nevertheless. The difference it has made because parents are sharing with me what our teachers are doing as far as reaching out to our students. But in the same sense, we've got community reaching out to our teachers because this has been a horrific event. We have been out of school since March 3rd. And again, no other district has faced the calamity and what we have as far as losing two schools, the impact across a community, and then the specter of what I refer to as the plague. And that's what I mean by biblical proportion because everyone's looking at us right now, other districts, how are you dealing with this? And I thank you for that. I'm not going to tell you it's been easy. We have developed school plans as far as to finish out the school year. We've not been able to implement them yet, but we have good, solid plans of sister schools being paired up very deliberately because all four schools, Stoner Creek with Springdale, Wes Wilson with Mount Juliet, are all reward schools in the top 5%. So there's no mistake as far as what's happening there. But we also have proximity and likeness of schools. And with that marriage, there's a uniqueness with it as far as because we see a mutual benefit on both sides. And so that, when we get to go back to school, will take place because if you heard the governor this morning, he presented to the state, because again, schools were closing, over 30 districts, and then it started mushrooming very quickly as cases were being presented. And so he, his order or his notice this morning was to urge all school districts to close through March 31st. And that brings us down to about six weeks of school left for most districts. And so not knowing where and how this will end, we already have people asking, well, how do you think, you know, what will the, when will the grading period end? And will you issue report cards? I don't know. And that's the least of our worries. There might not be report cards, and that might be okay with a lot of kids.
Yeah.
In fact, I've had kids say, you know, you can forget them quickly if you want to. But in light of all that, and trying to find some levity with all this, we are addressing it, some of it individually, but the thing is, first and foremost, is the health and well-being of our staff and our children. And I'm being asked about state assessments. I don't care. There might be an emergency task. I know that we've got a lot of legislators, and a shout-out for Clark Boyd right now because he was on it Friday morning. Something has to be done. We need relief. This is ridiculous. We know how well our kids are doing, but right now, we've had a traumatic event. Please lobby for relief. And he, he's been on it. And so that, we have it. The other thing I want to bring to this vibe, we understand there's a lot of hardship with families right now. They have no childcare. Many of them are needing to go to work, and they have a return. And we were, we were a lifeline for that as far, not only for an after-school care, but also with even for staff. So that's something, we need prayers and assistance somehow for these families that are doing the very best they can and they can't go to work. And then we also have as far as those students that are on school, and they're much so in this district, free and reduced lunch students, those that need to be fed. Many of our students that were on that free and reduced lunch received two meals a day, breakfast and lunch. One of the things that has happened in Wilson County, at one time, we had a fairly high threshold, 40 to 45% free and reduced lunch. And the federal threshold right now as far as to making access for all is 50%. And our district has really seen a reduction in what we see as poverty levels as measured by federal guidelines. And so we have pockets of extreme poverty, and we have children in real need. And so we are doing food delivery starting tomorrow to get out into those areas and hoping to expand it even more next week. And even though it's very rigid as far as that you can feed children that are 18 and younger, and you have to see them to be able to either give it to them or whatever, the whole family's in need. And so we're trying to think creatively to make sure we take care of the whole family unit because these are going to be really hard times. And I want to thank several of you that have already reached out with assistance and help. I will not embarrass by names, but thank you because that's been really important as far as because we're having some challenges on that. State guidelines right now, just to give you an update on that, we don't know. There was an emergency meeting this afternoon at 12 o'clock, much of what they'd already repeated last week. However, they're doing some emergency sessions to see what can be given with allowances for state testing and the impact. Why state testing becomes important and why it needs to go away this year is because this is the year that it'll be used for A through F grading for schools and districts. And if you can imagine a letter grade being placed on a school, I don't know of a parent out there that even if it was a C, which means average and good, I don't want my child in a C school, I want an A school. So the ramifications are huge for that, and testing would be flawed if given anywhere in the state when you look at the amount of instructional days missed because of COVID. So with that, the challenges that we're facing right now is something that, the one-to-one initiative that we presented to you five years ago, had we had in place and a solid, as far as having equity among all of our schools, it might be a little different as far as how we could present instruction. Time and place would become irrelevant, and we're seeing a lot of districts that can move to that. So that's something that we need to really consider, particularly as we keep moving deeper into the 21st century and knowing right now, all of our colleges and universities have gone to online classes for the remainder of the semester. I mean, that is the way the world is moving. So with that, I just want to let everyone know that also tonight, or tomorrow night, we would have been recognized, and I brought this up to the body last month, that, yes, somewhat of the irony, the school districts being recognized as a 2020 COSIN Team Award, it's a national award for school districts for outstanding leadership team effort as far as using technology and the impact on student learning and how it's been transformational for a large school district. And so that's an award that the school district, the Instructional Technology Department specifically has put forth, and I wanted to make sure that they're honored for that because much of the good work in support of this body, allowing us a great deal of latitude, strong instruction with teachers that are exceptional, that could go anywhere else, but they're very loyal to this county. And then administrators that really have worked hard to make sure that they're instructional leaders and not just managers. And that makes a difference in a school system. And if there are no questions, that is.
Senator Park.
Commissioner Stafford. I would like to commend Mr. Mickey Hall, if he's in the room, as well as Dr. Wright and the school board for taking the lead and making sure that our schools, that we lost two schools, as you stated, Mickey's lost part of his house, you've had family illnesses, and I'd like to really commend you and Mickey and the board for giving us 100% toll replacement cost on our school. That's good financial management, that's great thinking because just think, two schools would have cost this county 60 to 80 million dollars, to which is, everybody in this room know, we don't have right now.
Well, Commissioner, thank you for that.
We are really, really glad that, you know, you had that financial management thought to do.
Well, let me, and I'll make a point there because there's been a lot of what I call sidewalk engineers right now that have looked at the building from the street, and they think it's repairable. They haven't been able to see that they can look straight through to the other side with no walls. But we've had a lot of, and again, some people that have tried to make recommendations of how we can repair those buildings, and they're not salvageable. I mean, some of the, particularly the interior damage, and you can see the steel beams from the street, ladies and gentlemen, they're twisted. So that, but the thing that I do, and Commissioner Stafford, thank you for that comment, particularly from Mickey Hall. Usually, you do not see the insurance in place that we have. I haven't experienced it in anywhere else, but we've got replacement cost insurance for those two buildings. And for that, that not only is good management, but it was good thinking. And so I know that I've had some comments made that, well, our taxes are going to go up for sure now because you're not going to try to, because we're going to have to replace two new, two buildings with new buildings. No, we have insurance. And I thank the Lord for that. So with that, any other questions?
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Dr. Wright. Before we get to Public Works, just want to let everybody understand the FEMA process. We talked about it with the citizens. From our side, what's important is that we get our money back through this FEMA process. And to do that, we've got to do a good job of documenting what we're doing. And there's two phases, really. It's all the overtime that our employees put in, and then it's the debris removal, okay? And I want to go through this, why I picked Public Works time to do that, is that right now, we don't have a Public Works. So Commissioner Jones and the road commission really acts as our Public Works, and they have done a tremendous job there. And it's a job, if you see Mr. Murphy or Mr. Lynch or Commissioner Jones, need to be commended because every day they go out, they see more trees. They will clean a row, and then somebody will bring more out over the weekend when they have time. So it is a dis, I say disheartening, it is an uphill battle, so I commend them. So where the cities come involved, they've had, they have Public Works, and Lee Clark and Andy Barlow from the two respective cities have done a tremendous job, and they've had some sister cities come in and help them. We have as well with TDOT, TVA, the National Guard, and the Baptist Disaster Relief Group has helped us. Now, this is what I want to be sure that we know. So the city of Lebanon, they have taken their tree removal, okay? And they have a couple of places to put that. They could put that at the airport, or they've sent that to Rockwood, and they'll work on their reimbursement there. They could take the C and D to our landfill. Our landfill is going to charge them a tipping fee, okay? They do that so they can get reimbursed. If there's not a tipping fee charged, then they don't get a chance to get reimbursed. So somebody would say, I can't believe you're charging Lebanon that, but that's how they get reimbursed. The city of Mount Juliet have brought their trees to the landfill. There is no tipping fee there. You'll say, well, how do we get, how do they get reimbursed? The city of Mount Juliet will get reimbursed for their overtime hours or their manpower to get it there, and then we get reimbursed because we'll have a tub grinder out there, let's say with Rockwood, that will grind that up and charge us a bill, and we'll get that money back that way. So that's how, then C and D for Mount Juliet could be done the same way. Or they can take the other, which Lebanon has a contract with Middlebrook, and they'll take their bunch there, and so will Mount Juliet. How do we get our money back? Okay, so our overtime has to be documented. And again, now, I will brag on Cindy Lynch and her crew for to be documented. And again, now I will brag on Cindy Lynch and her crew for doing a tremendous job of absorbing all of this and taking this in because they've had to stay open extra hours. We've worked seven days a week out there and we commend them for that as well. And so what they do, the tub grinding will take care of the trees. They'll get their money, they get their money on the front end for the C and D, but we can't pay ourself. So we'll take our C and D and our other to Smith County. And Smith County is honoring the same rate that you guys got on a ten-year contract of the day at thirty-five dollars a ton. So they will, they're honoring that. They set up a separate account up there just for our people to go up there. So we'll be billed from them and we'll get our reimbursement back that way. But that's just the overall process. It is a detailed process. Why is it important? Because that is the only way we get FEMA dollars. What we don't get from FEMA will come from your fund balance. Okay? And so that's why during this time, we really will have to be particular when it comes to budget time. And me and Mr. Maynard have talked and we will try to give you an economic outlook before long because we will look and say, okay, how much property assessed value have we lost? I think we'll come back and look and see how much property values do we gain? What growth do we have? And hope they balance. And that's why this issue of this legislation, if we could recover there, that would be great. Sales tax again will be down in some sense, but because of all the rebuilding, it could go up. The schools will be okay because theirs is designated. Our cities will really gain maybe because theirs is not, theirs is extra revenue for them. So it's probably a win for them in that case. But I just wanted to kind of give you that overview. Our public works are our folks at the road commission and the landfill. And if you see those people, please thank them. They have worked their tails off to make this effort work well. So just want to bring that to your attention. Report from the Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers. Report from Ag Center Committee, Commissioner Scruggs.
Ag Center met March fifth.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Animal control, Commissioner Marlowe.
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
Cable tax, Commissioner Walker.
No report.
Developing tourism, Commissioner Van Adam.
Yes, development tourism met Tuesday, March seventeenth. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Got a motion and a second. Now discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ethics, Commissioner Ash.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Health and recreation, Commissioner Patton.
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner Ash.
No report, but we are meeting tomorrow night at six o'clock here.
Judicial, Commissioner Glover.
Judicial met October first, five. Also met March fifth. Didn't have a quorum on March fifth, so we met tonight. I move these be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Planning zoning, Commissioner McFarlane.
Planning zoning met Monday, March second, six P.M. Minutes are in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Rules, Commissioner Gentry.
No report.
Urban type facility board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban type facility board met March sixth.
Motion is second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Finance director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
Very briefly, you have a report on debt obligation on your desk. That is for the Fred's Building Purchase and Improvements. Borrowed on capital outlay note one million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. The interest rate on that is one point seven two three percent. That was fantastic. Really, really pleased with that. The finance report itself, which was not available at the budget meeting due to the tornado and other reasons, we have collected eighty-eight point four two percent of our current property taxes in comparison. Same time last year, we had collected eighty-seven point one five percent. So we're up over one percent in property tax collection so far. Total revenue through February of last year, we had collected a little over forty-three million dollars. We have collected a little over forty-six million thus far for fiscal year 2020. I did get a letter from Rachel Hall with the Department of Revenue. Briefly, due to the tornadoes and severe storms, the department is issuing an automatic tax filing extension until July fifteen, two thousand twenty for income tax and franchise and exercise tax. It was due after three, three of twenty. The department will also issue extensions on a case-by-case basis for sales and use tax, business tax, and other taxes. There could be a delay in some collections. I do not expect that to be extremely significant. I feel good about where we are for 2020. I feel great about where we are when I hear the report of Emergency Management Director and Sheriff and the Director of Schools and the things that I have seen, the work of the road department in my neighborhood and the things that I have seen. And it's truly, it doesn't happen often, but when you wake up in the morning and you're not, I hate to say it, when the political divide is gone and the one-on-nine divide is gone and nobody cares who's a Republican and who's a Democrat, but we're all a Wilson County family, if there is a silver lining, it is to wake up for a few days and have that happen. In addition, for, as the Director of Schools says, do not have had children in those schools. Tremendous pleasure. That concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met Thursday, March fifth, six fifteen in the conference room. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolutions, Commissioner Marlowe.
Resolution twenty dash three dash one, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee to amend administrative guidelines, procedures, and regulations and forms for the collection of the adequate facilities tax.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Record reflected, unanimous.
Resolution twenty dash three dash two, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget for the 2019-20 fiscal year and to amend the budget and appropriation resolutions for the nineteen-twenty, excuse me, 2019-2020 fiscal year to transfer these funds into tourism.
Got a motion and a second. Now any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three yes, two absent. Resolution passes.
Resolution twenty dash three dash three, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee to amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the 2019-2020 fiscal year for line item transfers into the drug corps.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. Twenty-three yes, two absent. Resolution passes and we've already taken care of the other one. Any old business to come before this body? Okay, before we go to that, we will ask for a, we'll do old business and new business at the end and we'll move to public hearing for our commission right now. Do I hear a motion to go out of session? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now I will ask Mr. Tom Bishers to come forward to conduct our public hearing. Business in front of you tonight.
Mayor, before I start, I did want to mention one revenue significant issue that might get lost in the weeds with everything that's been going on. You should have all, if you haven't already, you should be receiving census forms in the mailbox sometime this week. April first is the official start of the census, but you can start responding online to the federal census as soon as you get it in the mail. That is revenue significant. By 2018, they estimated, the Census Bureau had estimated that we had grown by approximately twenty-six thousand people. If you just add up the state share revenues, three million dollars per year that we're missing with that growth, and we hope that we've grown more than the 2018 estimate of a hundred and forty thousand people. So please encourage all of your folks, whether or not they were storm damaged, whether or not they're quarantined or sheltering in place due to COVID, please ask them to fill out their census information. It does help our local community in every effort we undertake, including disasters. Please do that. With that, I will proceed with the public hearings.
You can actually fill out your census form online now. It's available and it's 2020census.gov is the website.
Thank you. And thank you to Lauren and Teresa Bush and several other people in this room that I will get in trouble if I try to mention all of them for being on my complete count committee. I was the chairman of that. A public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, March eighteenth, 2020, at seven P.M. or thereafter in the county commission room of the Wilson County Courthouse located here at two twenty-eight East Main Street. Items for consideration include an application by Norman Christman to rezone approximately two acres from A-one agricultural zoning to C-one neighborhood commercial zoning. The properties are located as unaddressed property that are located at the corner of Karen Drive and at ninety-one twenty-seven Lebanon Road and are further referenced as Wilson County Property Map fifty-four parcels fifty, sixty-four and sixty-five. A copy of this request has been on file at the Wilson County Courthouse and located in my office at two twenty-eight, at room five in the basement here at two twenty-eight East Main Street. Anyone wishing to come forward is requested, or anyone wishing to speak is requested to come forward at this time. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward to the podium in the back there, state your name and address for the record.
What was the date? Whatever you said. You said the eighteenth?
Yeah, what is the date?
The day's the sixteenth.
I misread it. Sixteen. I need to get my glasses checked. It's March sixteenth. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. My name's Mike Weston. I live at one forty-one Karen Drive. I'm here on behalf of a number of residents of Verona Hills, which is on Karen Drive, part of Karen Drive, all of Karen Drive. There's a whole lot more that we're going to be here tonight with the buyer situation. A lot have decided to stay at home, which I completely understand. We're not in favor of this request for the rezoning across the sixty-four, sixty-five to any commercial zone because of several reasons.
Property is more suited for residential. It is still agriculture right now. It is at the entrance of our subdivision, Verona Hills. And where it's situated in relation to the drop elevation on Lebanon Road, if you're going west, you drop off that hill and there's Karen Drive along with the West Elementary School. And it's already a dangerous intersection now. There's been a huge increase in traffic accidents there since explosion of growth of the area. And if you throw in the possibilities of commercial business there, you're creating a more potential dangerous intersection, not to mention how hard it is for the residents to get in and out of there now. There's also, we feel it creates negative impacts on our neighborhood in multiple ways, such as the aesthetics on the entrance, traffic safety issues, which I've mentioned, and property values. We've already experienced some of these negative impacts because of the temporary zoning for our Christmas tree roadside stand type zoning that was allowed. So then also sixty-four and sixty-five will go commercial. That leg is parcel sixty-three, which is also owned by Mr. Christman, which connects directly to parcel sixty-four. So the theory is, is once that's commercial, then it keeps getting deeper in our neighborhood. So any commercial zoning here will cause a lot of problems. It would not be desirable for the entrance to Verona Hills or the area for that matter. So we, the residents of Verona Hills respectfully ask this commission not to approve the rezoning request. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this property?
How are you guys doing tonight? It's cold in here. So I did take my gloves off. My name's Philip Stegner. I've been in Verona Hills, built a house there in nineteen eighty-four. I've seen Mount Juliet grow and it's getting harder and harder to turn left coming out of Karen Drive. This property we're talking about is right from across the school playground. If it's commercial, who knows what it will be? And I'm, it's already so dangerous right now in the afternoons and the mornings with the traffic going into town and everybody that lines up to drop their kids off or pick their kids up at the end of the day for school, it is going to be a nightmare. And we don't know if they will ever widen Lebanon Road, that leg there to one-on-nine. But I think even then, it'll be worse because people will be going a little faster with a four-lane road. So hopefully, respect that you guys would take a view of that and, but we're not, we just don't think we can live with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move to the next property. Tom?
And I do apologize. I did get a message from my eye doctor just today telling me that I was overdue for it. It does say March sixteenth. It's just I can't read the fine print in the classified ad. A public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, March sixteenth, 2020, at seven P.M. or thereafter in the county commission room of the Wilson County Courthouse located here at two twenty-eight East Main Street in Lebanon, Tennessee. Items for consideration include an application that has been made by Russell Thompson to rezone approximately twenty-five acres from R-one rural residential to I-one light industrial. These properties are located on Murfreesboro Road and referenced by Wilson County Property Map one fourteen, parcels twenty-seven oh one and forty-three oh one. A copy of this information has been on file in the planning office, which is room five of the courthouse here at two twenty-eight East Main Street. Anyone desiring to comment is requested to come forward at this time.
Anyone here wishing to speak on the property on Murfreesboro Road, thirty-eight seventy-six? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Mark Wood. I pass the lie.
House Tabernacle, thirty-seven sixty-two, Murfreesboro Road. We don't really know what they want to do with this piece of property. I've looked at the list of what they can do with it if it gets rezoned. Some of it's not so bad. Some of it's pretty bad for the kids we have running around in the yard. We have quite a few kids go to church and I'd just like to know what's going to be there. Well, the property's not sold yet. We don't know what could be, but there, it could be, according to the sheet I was given, a swimming pool supply warehouse. Well, they stored chlorine in the back. If it was a recording studio, no, wouldn't be a big deal. It's residential right now. We'd like to see it stay that way. I'd just like to give you my vote to not change the zoning on it. Thank you for allowing me here tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the property on Murfreesboro Road? Seeing none, we'll close public comment period and we'll go back in the session if I get a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And now we're back in the regular session and I will start with whichever one you want to.
Okay, I have a request here from Norman Christman to rezone proxim, rezone property from, at the corner of Karen Drive and Highway seventy from A-one to C-one neighborhood commercial. Now, let me explain a little bit of what's went on in the process of this rezoning application. Mr. Christman came in and originally requested Mr. Christman came in and originally requested C3 highway commercial zone. He then amended that to C2. He amended his request prior to proceeding to Mount Juliet, as I recall, to C2 general commercial zone. The city of Mount Juliet discussed this at their planning commission meeting, discussed it with Mr. Christman, as I understand it, and came to an agreement of sorts for them to make a recommendation to this body that was more in keeping with their land use plan for C1 neighborhood commercial zone. So what you have before you is a recommendation from the city of Mount Juliet whereby they have recommended approval of a C1 neighborhood commercial rezoning request for this, these two parcels.
Okay, we have, do I have a motion on the floor to get it on the floor?
I'd like to speak to this. This is in my-
Hang on, hang on, hang on one second. I'm going to go that route.
That's why I'm going to hear the commissioners for both of these.
Gotcha. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you. This is in my district, and I told the folks 10 years ago when I run for District Four that I would represent them. I had about 40 to 50 emails and probably 20, 25 calls against this, and I would just like to make a motion. This be denied. Okay, we just want to deny the request for the rezoning to C1. Believe it as is. Well, a lot of the complaints, it's like they were speaking on was, I get calls every day about 170 will widen and that type thing. And so there's a lot of concerns about the traffic. And like I told the applicant, that, you know, maybe 170 gets widened out, that, you know, maybe that will be down the road. But as of now, a lot of the traffic concerns with west traffic, that type thing.
So Commissioner Bernard, you're asking to deny the rezoning request based on safety issues and traffic?
That's my motion. I got a motion there. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a second. Now of the discussion. Commissioner Patton?
That's going to also, my district, mine and Chad, me and Chad spoke about this, is that there, you got to remember, there is a school, West Elementary, that is right there. And I can tell you, every morning when traffic goes back up all the way to almost Cook Hill, I know that just not too long ago, we were trying to get a red light back with, during the fact of a 500, 61 home, I guess, another subdivision coming in on the backside of Jackson Hills. So keep that in mind also with the traffic. I think it would be a good idea due to the safety and the traffic volume that would be there at this time. I'm with Commissioner Bernard.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, I was on the Mount Juliet Planning Commission. It voted 7-1 to recommend this. I wasn't one. The neighborhood commercial account isn't really consistent with Mount Juliet neighborhood. It's much more open, and I'm not sure that the understanding of that body, I would probably not vote in that series.
Any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none, are you ready to vote on denial of this request to be rezoned? I got a motion and a second based on safety and traffic issues. All in favor, say aye for denial.
Aye.
And opposed? But the record reflected was unanimous. Continue, Mr. Bishers.
Yes, the next item I have for rezoning is a rezoning request made by Russell Thompson to rezone approximately 25 acres, referenced as map 114 parcel 2701 and map 114 parcel 4301 on Murfreesboro Road, an old Murfreesboro Road, from R1 Rural Residential to I1 Light Industrial. And this does come to you from the Wilson County Regional Planning Commission with a positive recommendation.
Commissioner Ash?
Mr. Chairman, this is in the 12th district, and this zoning request is in consistent with everything else that's going on out there on 231 from the Rock Quarry to Fleet Market. I move for approval.
I got a motion for approval. I hear a second. Now discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The record reflected was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Bishers.
Thank you, and thank you to all the first responders for what you did during the storm event. Very much appreciated.
Is there any old business to come before this body? Seeing none, any new business to come before this body?
Mr. Chairman.
Put on our table.
Uh, yeah, hang on, hang on. Okay. Commissioner Ash?
Mr. Chairman, here's a resolution's been passed out that our county attorney and I and my distinguished colleague next to me, John Gentry, looked at this weekend. Hopefully, I'll let you explain this if you like, or Mayor Jennings, but this issue with COVID-19 is fast-moving, and it's got a lot of implications, and we don't know what the long term's going to be. But we want to be able to conduct business, and we learned it nine one long time ago, that you can conduct some of this very successfully, the way this resolution's written. And Mike, if you'd kind of explain what that does, please, and-
Yeah, what we've done here is proposed amendment rule 39 on a temporary basis through the May County Commission meeting. To be in further than need to, it will allow people to participate in a committee meeting by electronic, through my phone, or by Skype, or whatever it has to be. The rest of the committee has to be with them. During the meeting, you've got to be able to recognize that the person who is, wherever they are, calling in, Skyping in, is the person, that's the actual county commissioner. They are considered for a form, it's like they're present. The meeting still has to be advertised, and we, you know, if we are notified, if the county clerk or myself is notified that somebody can't be here, who doesn't participate electronically, the public meeting notice can say that, that one or more members may participate electronically. This is done in case something happens and they lock us all down, and, you know, we can't get together or whatever, but we need to conduct some business. Mayor Hutto was telling me earlier tonight, there might be some legislation going through the state house and senate that will do this for us. If they don't get anywhere with that, we've got this on our local rules. If they do pass something, of course, we'll have to follow what they say. But this is probably, Commissioner Ash called me about it last week, Friday, I guess, and it may be working. Hopefully, you won't have to use, which you could use it if you need to. Let me, let me share with you that it is not designed to take place if you come into a meeting, okay? Don't, don't use this if you have to, if your obligation is still to be here. And I can plus that to now to relapse, and I wouldn't say that before. But the, seriously, you're supposed to be, but, you know, if you're out, some of these folks, Mr. Dow, folks like that, they're out, or Mr. Glover, they're out, on cleanup or whatever they're doing, and they can take time to call from the car or whatever, participate, just allow them to do it.
Motion is second.
Motion is second. Let me add to this if I can. We did get word today from another county mayor or two that said that we should be prepared for this, that they heard that that was coming down legislatively, maybe tomorrow, as early as tomorrow. And so if it comes from them, then you've taken care of our local rules by doing what you're doing here with Commissioner Ash. And then I think for us, if we have to get together and we can't get together, and we're trying to work through IT to where we would have at least 30 phones available, where we could have a conference call and bring you in. We could still film that portion of it with people's voices there, but we could still conduct business on a full commission level as well as a committee level if we have to. As often as we can meet, we're definitely going to do that. I will add to this. I do have you all on a text message, and I do that in order to communicate to you if I have to, just to let you know briefly. I would, you know, if you're going to respond to me, if you just respond to me privately and not, not hit the reply button so it gets, it continues to ring everybody, but I do need to be able to get to you and let you know certain things, I feel like during these times. And so that's why we set this up for immediate notification. So if you will just respond back to me on a separate text, I would appreciate that. But, so this is not, hopefully, a two-way conversation, but, or I can get word out to you in a moment's notice if I need to. Now, we have some discussion on this. I have a motion and a second. I know it's got two signatures. It didn't go through committee, so we're good on that process. And I'll start with Commissioner Gentry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say this is a temporary rule change until, maybe-
The next time that we meet.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Kurtz?
Two questions. Number one, this allows for any reason, I mean, I know why it's written, but for any reason at all, I could be on vacation in Florida and still call in.
You go through the next six weekends.
Right. And then what if no one can be here? Does it allow for all of us to call in at one time?
That's what we're hoping, that if they tell us and they quarantine us where we can't come together as a body, like the rule is today, no more than 10 gathered at one time, and you see what I have in here. So, so we, again, we don't have any cases live in Wilson County, but it may get to that point. So we want to be able to conduct business if we need to, not only at committee level, but on a commission level. And so that's really what it's for.
So then determine who is who. Do we have a platform picked out for that? Do we have Zoom, or are we going to use?
I'm hoping that we can go by voices. We know each other. That would probably be up to one of us to be able to determine that, I think. That, that would be my call. I mean, these are weird situations. Nothing's going to be perfect as we go forward, guys. You know that. And so that would be my hopes. I don't think anybody would be malicious and turn this into something different.
Yes, I think one of the questions I want to ask is, somebody's got to be here to coordinate all of it. Everybody calls in. Somebody might say you're the mayor or whoever, somebody's got to be there. But, you know, it's designed that when you enter into the committee meeting through this way, you introduce yourself and say where you are. Now, trust me, you don't need to call me from a place you're supposed to. But, you know, like, if you call in and say, I'm trying to get there, I got to get down from the driveway, I'm Mike Hutto, I'm the first person on the first meeting.
We got the April meeting and the May meeting, March meeting, April meeting, and May is when we'll be-
Any committee?
Any committee meeting, yes, sir. But if we can meet together without that, we're going to try to do that. Mr. Patton?
What is not, what is not going to do, to, like, to, because if it allows us to, if something happens that we can't-
We'll play this day by day, and we'll let you know on each one of those.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't matter where they are, it just matters who they are.
Well, you got to say where you are.
And there's one of those, I know that there's like, what do you guys, like, what they're saying about, and how they, that, that change, that they're paying, then don't be, don't be, especially, because it's definitely changing, you know, that this-
Yeah, I think we're looking at a two-month crisis. We're looking at a two-month crisis, and we'll work our way through that process.
I just want to make sure this resolution is given a number, so that we will, once we vote on it, it's all good. I know it's 23-5, but I want to make sure it had a number.
23-5 will be the number. Okay? And Commissioner Smith?
Just real quick, in reference to the IT part of it, do we have the set funds to be, will we be made aware of how much it would cost if we had to apply to the end of the IT department to make that happen?
We're, we're working on that now. We have the capability of a few right now, Commissioner Smith, but we're working on the full thing, and hopefully that's not something outside of our budget realm. Okay? Commissioner Breeze?
Currently, Zoom is actually offering their platform, their premium platform, for free because of COVID-19. So that's a, it's a program we could use. There's also, I think Google's Premium, a teleconferencing program is also free. I think I was notified of that today. So we've got two different options of teleconferencing, so it's kind of like Skype, but for business, if that makes sense to everybody. So they're both currently, both platforms are free, no cost to anyone at this point because of COVID-19.
And IT is working on this. They got notified on that today, so they will be giving us some guidance. Any other questions?
All for quick.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Got one no. Let the record reflect, we had one no. Anything else to come before this body?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Glover?
What is the plan for the Wilson County Fairgrounds, Ag Center?
Ag Center right now is on a day-by-day basis. We've asked, of course, right now we have most, well, everybody in the expo has to cancel. We have a one event going on right now and no other scheduled for the Ag Center once this event's over. So those, we will be abiding or working our best after this week of the 10-member rule. Other questions?
Oh, who, second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.